Today is December 17th, 2024. It is 5:30 and we are in the Bosch Freilich Meeting Room at Mandan City Hall. Mr. Newbauer, will you please take the roll?
Commissioners Braun.
Here.
Roar.
Here.
Schoberg.
Here.
Heinzchen.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. Fire Chief Mitch Bits will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is our last meeting before Christmas and the New Year's, so we're in a festive spirit. So when some of us are in our Christmas ties, lights, jacket, stockings, so don't be alarmed when you see it. First, we're going to start with announcements, and first on the agenda is Matt Shanador, Executive Director of the Mandan Progress Organization. He's going to give us an update on the Mandan Holiday Lights.
Thank you, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, for having me here tonight. Yes, came to talk about the Holiday Lights. We are about halfway through our season at the Holiday Lights, and it has been going very, very well. We've had a couple cold nights, but a lot of good weather nights as well. And attendance is right around 26,000 so far for the first 17 days of operation, which is about 8,000 up from last year for 17 days. So we're seeing some really good attendance at the lights on weekends. Fridays and Saturdays are pretty busy, if people haven't noticed already with the traffic coming down. They did load up some pictures here. There we go. So they loaded up some pictures of just the last few nights. We had our kickoff grand lighting on the Friday after Thanksgiving. Santa and Mrs. Claus were there. We kicked it off. We had just about 3,000 people that night that helped light up the parks. Kind of see some of the crowd there on Main Street. Santa's arrival the next day on Saturday drew about 300 to 400 people out for meet and greets with Santa and Mrs. Claus in the Morton Mandan Public Library, and that led into another great night at the Holiday Lights. There's the crowd waiting for the meet and greet with Santa. Here is a picture from the balcony of the library looking out into the park. This was one of our busier nights. This was the first Saturday of December. We saw just over 9,000 people that night attending the lights, so it was a very, very busy night in downtown Mandan and Dyke Shore and Park. And our new event, which we just had this last weekend, we were lucky enough to be asked to continue to host the Santa Run, which was normally or historically done at the Bismarck State Capitol grounds. Judge Reich and his wife Anne are retiring, and so they kindly asked us if we would continue the tradition for them. So we did, and we had just over 500 Santas running on Main Street, a lot of red out there going down the street, but it was great to see. A lot of great participants taking on that Santa Run, and the Santa Run itself is a event, a charity event raising funds for Hope Manor and, oops, there we go, Hope Manor and addiction awareness programs in the Bismarck Mandan area. So a lot of great activities there. A lot of people still running in shorts when it was 20 degrees out, so we're a hardy group of people. Some more runners there. So it was a great activity. It ended when the lights were turning on. A lot of great people stayed around taking pictures, that kind of stuff. So, yeah, we're coming up on a historically our busiest weekend, the weekend before Christmas, and then next week, weather looks really nice, so we should see some very nice attendance over the Christmas holiday into the weekend after.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any comments?
Just question, Mayor. Matt, how long will the lights continue to be on through this season?
January 4th is our final night.
January 4th, okay.
So I had a call this afternoon by a retired gentleman, and I thought, oh, oh, here it comes. But this was a good call. He said he was so proud of the city of Mandan and everything going on with the Holiday Lights. And I said, well, that's Matt Shanador and his crew at the MPO and Public Works and all the volunteers that have made it happen. So thank you, Matt.
Yes, no problem. Yeah, no, we get a lot of good shout out to Public Works. Mandan PD helped with the Santa Run, so it's a really big collaborative effort on the city and the MPO to put this on. So it's great to have, and it does show.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to Amy Berger. We're going to do our quarterly employee
Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are excited to announce our quarter four employee recognition. Those employees this quarter have hit three, five, 20, and 30 years of employment with the city of Mandan. So I will call those names forward, and Mayor Freilich will present that employee with a certificate of service. And then if everyone could just hang out until the end so we could take a picture. So that being said, first up is Dane Anderson, Senior Accountant with three years of employment. Next is Eric Short, firefighter, three years of employment. Jordan Singer, building official, three years of employment. Travis Tikapie, water treatment plant operator, three, five years of employment. Wade Hoffer, equipment operator, two, five years of employment. And then Jason Beard, Deputy Police Chief, 20 years of employment with the city of Mandan. And we also had two employees that were not able to attend tonight, but we didn't want to recognize them. So Aaron Haverlock is a detective, and he had three years of employment. And Tim Meidinger is a utility operator, and he had 30 years of employment with the city of Mandan. So congratulations to everyone, and we thank you all for your years of service
Mr. Newbauer.
Mayor Freilich, it is my pleasure to introduce our new Computer Information Systems Manager, Carrie Mitchell, who is right now delivering a souped-up, fixed-up computer to Commissioner Schoberg. So on the job and away we go. Carrie started with us on November 26. She has extensive background in the computer world and working for Connecting Point for, I think, about 14 years and 16 years, and also with, most recently, with Starion Bank. So Carrie, again, Carrie started November 26. We're also, we are currently already getting updates on things we need to be doing in the information and computer world to protect ourselves. So welcome, Carrie. And if you have any words, are you good?
Yeah. Just like to say thank you to Jim and everybody at the city. It's been fun and great so far. I've really enjoyed meeting everybody and getting to see what's happening here at the city, and I'm excited to move forward and see what I can do.
Thank you, Carrie. Welcome. Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you.
I move that we approved the agenda for tonight.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Okay, on to Agenda Item F, Consider Covat Lakewood Plan Unit Development Amendment. Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners. I have my location map on the screen here for this item. This is a request from VE Land Company as represented by Arthur Goldhammer for an amendment to the PUD for the Covat Lakewood Development Plan. Some of you may be familiar with this project. About a little over a year ago now, a plat was approved for commercial development on this property, which would entail, this is a property where Phil was being brought in to turn the pond back into developable land in southeast Mandan on the south side of 21st Street. The applicant did request some adjustments to the development plan for this project. Previously, all the commercial uses were to be in detached structures, and this proposal is more towards multi-tenant facilities, more like a multi-use shop or a shop condo building. No changes to land use or what would be allowed to take place on the property, really just an adjustment in form, which also has an increase in the number of units as well, given the kind of the space efficiencies, switching from detached to attached structures allowed for. So I have an ordinance included for the public hearing this evening that stipulates the commercial uses that would be permitted to take place on the property. I also have site layout and rendering drawings as well in the packet for the board's review. So here's a site plan that shows how the units would be laid out in the six or so buildings and aerial as well. This is looking towards the southwest, and this looking towards the southeast. The Planning Commission did consider this request at their November meeting and recommends approval. PUD amendments are ordinances, so there are two considerations in a public hearing this evening. I can take any questions that you have. Staff does recommend to conduct the public hearing, and a first motion can be made on, a motion rather, can be made on the first consideration of the zoning with public, or resolutions and ordinances, number one later down on this agenda. Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor Andrew, the lagoon then will remain as part of the aesthetics view of that, and there's no intention to close that all in?
No. Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, that is correct. There is no, this change is not going to affect the pond at all. It's really just what the filled-in property is going to be developed like.
I think that lagoon can be a beautiful place. It's kind of rough right now, but you know, if you, trees and different things around, that could be really added to that particular area if they fix that up. I think it's all private property, isn't it?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, to my knowledge, the land surrounded are private, correct?
Be good to encourage them as they go along with that to do that.
Any additional questions for Andrew? If not, we will open the public hearing at this time. Are there any comments? Second call for comments. Third call for comments. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed, and I would ask the Commissioners to move to the first item under resolution and ordinances. Andrew?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioners, Ordinance 1459 is the ordinance number we've assigned to the PUD amendment. It will be brought back for a second consideration at our first meeting in January, and staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Hearing none.
I move to approve the first consideration of Ordinance 1459. I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Okay, on to Agenda Item F, Consider Covat Lakewood Plan Unit Development Amendment. Andrew?
Good evening, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners. I have my location map on the screen here for this item. This is a request from VE Land Company as represented by Arthur Goldhammer for an amendment to the PUD for the Covat Lakewood Development Plan. Some of you may be familiar with this project. About a little over a year ago now, a plat was approved for commercial development on this property, which would entail, this is a property where Phil was being brought in to turn the pond back into developable land in southeast Mandan on the south side of 21st Street. The applicant did request some adjustments to the development plan for this project. Previously, all the commercial uses were to be in detached structures, and this proposal is more towards multi-tenant facilities, more like a multi-use shop or a shop condo building. No changes to land use or what would be allowed to take place on the property, really just an adjustment in form, which also has an increase in the number of units as well, given the kind of the space efficiencies, switching from detached to attached structures allowed for. So I have an ordinance included for the public hearing this evening that stipulates the commercial uses that would be permitted to take place on the property. I also have site layout and rendering drawings as well in the packet for the board's review. So here's a site plan that shows how the units would be laid out in the six or so buildings and aerial as well. This is looking towards the southwest, and this looking towards the southeast. The Planning Commission did consider this request at their November meeting and recommends approval. PUD amendments are ordinances, so there are two considerations in a public hearing this evening. I can take any questions that you have. Staff does recommend to conduct the public hearing, and a first motion can be made on, a motion rather, can be made on the first consideration of the zoning with public, or resolutions and ordinances, number one later down on this agenda. Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor Andrew, the lagoon then will remain as part of the aesthetics view of that, and there's no intention to close that all in?
No. Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, that is correct. There is no, this change is not going to affect the pond at all. It's really just what the filled-in property is going to be developed like.
I think that lagoon can be a beautiful place. It's kind of rough right now, but you know, if you, trees and different things around, that could be really added to that particular area if they fix that up. I think it's all private property, isn't it?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, to my knowledge, the land surrounded are private, correct?
Be good to encourage them as they go along with that to do that.
Any additional questions for Andrew? If not, we will open the public hearing at this time. Are there any comments? Second call for comments. Third call for comments. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed.
I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the JR's Estate Second Edition.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We will move on to Agenda Item H, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items you would like removed? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda for tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Agenda Item J, New Business. Presentation by North Dakota Music Hall of Fame, Marlo
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're kind of excited to be here today. We have a couple of our board members, Brock Holbert, Jim Silrom. Wave, gentlemen. Thank you. We thought we should probably visit with you a little bit about our plans in 2025. The Music Hall of Fame's been around since 2018. We were excited to start bringing that project forward. Of course, COVID kind of got in the way, and, but along with that, you know, some new technologies come along and those type of things. So we're reimagining what we can potentially do here in Mandan. So we have a little deck, and if you have any questions at any time. I don't use PowerPoint a whole lot, Jim. I hope I'm going to do this right. Ah, let's see it from the beginning. Yes, there we go. So we're thinking about expand, our plan is to expand the North Dakota Music Hall of Fame, and it's a vision for Mandan. I have some of the people that have been inducted into the Hall of Fame so far, Lawrence Welk, Peggy Lee, Mitch Malloy, and then Alf Claussen. He is the Simpsons character. Many people do not know that the music from the Simpsons is actually from a Jamestown native. You'd be surprised at the talent that we have that have come from Mandan. We have nine inductees right now into the Music Hall of Fame. I do this, I have a unique position in the world, as some of you know. I get the opportunity to travel and speak quite a bit. And one of the things I do is a little word exercise when I'm traveling through North Dakota as far as identity to different towns. And I'll ask people, like, if you give me one or two words to describe Minot to me, and a lot of people will say the music, or the State Fair, or North Cruz Fest. Grand Forks is usually known for hockey. Fargo for Bison, Bismarck, the capital. Now, there'll be other answers. Mayor Freilich and I went through this a week or two ago, and he got every one of those wrong. But Mandan is always the celebration city. It's always interesting. People will always, it might not be that they say the celebration city, but they'll say that we have buggies and blues, or we have Tetcha Truck, or we have the rodeo here, or the parade. So it's always about celebration. And people, when they ask why we're putting the Music Hall of Fame in Mandan, it's because Mandan really is the celebration city of North Dakota. So that's why we think that it belongs here in Mandan. We could pick other cities, of course, but we do really believe that it belongs in Mandan. We've done some things already. Probably, you know, many people may not even know that we have an art installation here in Mandan. That's what you're looking at right now. And that is at Dyke Shore and Park. We have our first four inductees on there. One of the things that we want to do next year is add on to this art installation with the additional Hall of Fame members that we have installed to this point. So that'll be one of the things that we're going to be doing. Another thing that we're going to be working towards is a traveling jukebox, and this is a lot of fun. This is going to be a trailer that we will outfit with an actual jukebox that can be used at events and that type of thing. The only thing in the jukebox is North Dakota musicians. So you'll be able to play inductees and other people as well, any other musicians that we have in the state. So it's going to be a lot of fun. We're able to actually get 45s made of any current music that's digital. So the idea is that it's going to combine the old and the new kind of together. The walking trail and bronze statues are probably going to be the biggest thing that we're going to be bringing to Mandan. So we are working with Linda.
Linda.
Thank you. Linda Little out of Dickinson. She is a world-renowned artist. She has some of her stuff in the Washington, in the Capitol, in DC, in the Pentagon. She's very, very well-respected and well-known, except for me, obviously. But we've been talking to her about doing the first two statues, which will be of Lawrence Welk and Peggy Lee. And these bronze statues will be an ongoing scenario in the city. Of course, we'll probably be coming to you in the future on where we would like to place these. But we didn't want to kind of broadside you in the future with this project that's going on. We wanted you to be informed with what we are doing right now. So we believe that this is going to be quite an attraction to the city. And we're not just going to stop there with these statues. We're actually going to add a little augmented reality to them. So when you put your phone up around the statues, they actually will come to life. You'll hear them sing. You'll be able to ask them questions. You'll ask Lawrence Welk, you know, what year he got married, and he will actually answer you back as Lawrence Welk, as to what year he got married, his first song that he recorded when he started his television show, that type of thing. I've actually been working towards that right now. And it's actually pretty cool, what you can ask. It's basically an artificial intelligence that will answer you as Lawrence Welk or as Peggy Lee. So the statues will come to life and answer those questions for you. So the Statue Trail concept, you know, it's basically inspired, many of you have probably been to Rapid City, and there is the presidents that you'll find down there. It's really impressive how many people actually stop and take photographs with those presidents. You know, we've talked about the possibility of building a building, and maybe we'll do that, or acquiring a building sometime in the future. But we truly believe that this is an experiential scenario that we have presented to us now, and we want people to experience this. And we believe that this is actually a better route to go to help people come into the town, build our business community even more by recruiting artists like Linda Little. You know, the placement of the statues, of course, are going to be key to this. We know we have some challenges with that, with the federal road that goes through the city, but I think we can work through that. And the objective is to explore the musical heritage that is North Dakota. The financial and technical aspects, of course, we're going to be working towards funding. We've already started that process. The statues are not cheap. They're about $150,000 apiece. These are actually life-size bronze statues. These are not miniatures. People will go up, they'll stand by them to take photos. And we believe in this social, these social media moments. This is what people do nowadays, as far as tourism goes. Collaboration, of course, we want to, we want to work real good stewards. We want to work with the city, with the business community to make this awesome. And of course, the technology that we'll be implementing into this. So we're looking at, you know, we think about, you know, Matt was up a little bit ago talking about the count to downtown Mandan as far as the traffic goes for the Holiday Lights. And it's impressive, right? It's not a one-day thing. It's not like the parade where everybody shows up in one day and dissipates. People come in every day, and that's how we believe that this will be as well. It might not be 20,000 or 30,000 or 40,000 people that show up. This is consistent traffic, 100 people, 200 people a day that'll be spending time
Just off the cuff thought, would there be a way to tie this in with the music programs at the school system?
Commissioner Schoburg, yeah, absolutely. In fact, one of the things that we have talked about a lot is, is if we ever had a facility, that we would have an indoor facility, even if it were to rain downtown during our music programs in the summer, it would be an alternate space for that. But there certainly could be, I'm guessing, some type of fundraising efforts with the, with the musical programs. You must be thinking of something, though, that I'm missing here.
I just popped into the head, you know, just.
I believe that the, you know, the whole purpose of this, you know, we think, we think about tourism for Mandan and that type of thing. And I'm, I'm talking to you in a way that makes sense to you, but we're really about the musical culture of the state. And we feel that having a Music Hall of Fame actually entices our, our musical students through our, our schools in the state now to maybe aspire to be greater. So we absolutely will, will engage with them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Marlo? Thank you, Marlo.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, Jerick. Consider Engineering Service Agreement Amendment for Memorial Highway Project.
Mayor Commissioners, for you today, I have an amendment to our Memorial Highway Project contract with HDR. Although our east half project is impending, due, due to be bid out on Friday, this is related to the west half project. The west half project extends from Main Street to just past the bowling alley, I believe it's 32nd Avenue. I'm gonna pull up a map here, just so everybody can orient themselves, maybe. So yeah, from Main Street to, yeah, 32nd Avenue Southeast. This contract amendment would include the design, the final design for the west half project, and would take it to a, take it to the bid opening, which would occur in summer of next year, summer to fall of next year. The amendment amount is for 377,000 and would bring our contract to a total of about $1.7 million. These engineering services have been accounted for in the estimated preliminary assessments that we put together for the district. It's our recommendation to approve this amendment, and if you have any questions for me, I can try and answer them. Otherwise, Craig from HDR is also here.
Mayor Jerick, I have a question. What unaccountable circumstance happened here to increase that amount here recently?
This is not Mayor, Mayor Commissioner Roar, this is not unaccounted for, this was anticipated. This would be taking a preliminary design, so that's usually how we structure our contracts with engineering firms, is we have a contract to the 30% design phase, and then to the 60% design phase, and then we amend it again to take it from 60% all the way to 100% and through bidding services. So we were anticipating an amendment to come along.
So simply a continuation of the designs as it goes along, is that correct?
Correct. And we would also be anticipating, after the bid opening on Friday, we would anticipate another amendment to come from HDR to amend their contract to include construction oversight services and stuff like that. So we just kind of take things one step at a time.
Please go.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Jerick, could this be an indication regarding the entire, the project in its entirety as to speak to that project's adaptive and resilient nature in responding to things that might just drop out of the sky on the project?
Um, maybe you could, I want to fully understand your question, maybe you could.
Well, I mean, you know, this is a huge project, and we're gonna have all sorts of different commentaries coming in from Bismarck Mandan population. And if, if, if this is an indication upfront as to how the folks that are working with us are adaptive and resilient, is this a, I guess, a foreshadowing of things to come in a positive note?
Um, Mayor Commissioner, yes. I, I think that, and I did include in the packet here, a piece, a public relations piece that I thought was included in this amendment, but I think I misrepresented that after talking with HDR a little bit more. We have been in talks with HDR to provide, yeah, public relation services and communication services that would go above and beyond what you typically see in an engineering consultant agreement. And that is to make sure that this project is successful, and we can, we can adapt to evolving situations during the project.
Well said. Thank you. Much better than mine.
Any more questions for Jerick?
If none.
I'll move to approve the amendment to the Engineering Service Agreement with HDR as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number three, consider request for Mandan Visitors Electronic Marquee Sign Replacement at the East End of Main Street.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, this is a, a request that started out with, city staff has gone through the Visitors Committee, it is being recommended to be funded. The marquee at the east end of Main Street has, over the last couple of years, had several panels that have been going out, and we've been replacing them as they go out. There's, if you look on the east panel, there's, I think, one panel that has already gone out, and we haven't replaced that because in anticipation of replacing the entire boards. We originally put the marquee up in 2009. We did one replacement in 2018 of the message boards, and that was at a cost of $32,700. We funded that out of our sales tax fund. The original building of the marquee and the display boards were funded out of the Visitors Fund. It seems like they have a five, six, seven-year life. We have now come to that point where after the 2018 boards are in need of replacement again, we did solicit three different quotes, or four different quotes, from Stewart Signs, which is our current vendor. Mann Signs, Bismarck Sign Company, and In-Ngo Signs provided a bid after our Visitors Committee meeting was had. We looked at going from a 16mm message board, which is what it is now, to a 10mm message board. The bids or the quotes on that were from Stewart Signs, was the lowest at $43,144 and change. The next bid was from Bismarck Sign Company at $56,864 and change, for about a $13,700 difference. And the bids from Mann Signs and In-Ngo were higher than the Bismarck Sign Company. So our recommendation, all things being relatively equal, would be, we have had good service with Stewart Signs on replacement and repairs to that message board already. The, the, I think, again, with the, the quotes that we've received, we would recommend purchasing the Stewart sign. We would ask that the Visitors Fund Committee had recommended up to $45,000, which gives us about $1,800 in wiggle room unless, in case we need some electrician work on the sign. So again, that is our request, or that is the Visitors Fund request coming forward to you today.
Mayor Jim, is there any new features that are coming about with the purchase of the new one? Or is it pretty much gonna be what this one is doing right now in terms of producing imaging and all that stuff, and how it's controlled? Is, is the new one gonna be any different?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Roar, it'll be very similar, other than the message board that are, we are recommending will have a better resolution to it. Obviously, as Marlo stated, as he's gone right now, times change really fast in the technology world, as you can know, even in television and screens and things like that. One year to the next year is completely different. The 10-millimeter display boards, I think, will have a much clearer picture. We are limited in what information we can put on the marquee, because it does sit on federal and state highway right-of-way. Therefore, we can't do private advertisements and things like that because of the restrictions that we're under. So there, like I said, there's limited things we can do. I think it's every seven seconds, your message can change, and there has to be a little bit of delay in between messages. I think we can put seven messages on there total that will rotate. So like I said, there's a lot of different nuances to this. The proposals, I believe, all of them would be controllable via an app or via a computer. So wherever you are in the world, you could be sending the different messages to the board.
So the measurement mm is similar to, as we know, in TV, pixels, right?
I would say you are right. I will look to our friends from.
So, I mean, I know more, I, when I say 10mm, I'm acquainted with, I'm acquainted with pixels as a measurement of how the resolution is.
You're accurate. I think Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Roar, the one thing that we noticed in here is when the existing signs to recalibrate the entire sign is, comes at a cost of $8,000, I think they recommend you do that when you replace a certain number of panels. I don't think we have ever recalibrated that sign, so we have not gone that far, because it hasn't been that noticeable to the eye when you're looking at it, that would, it would need, like, these bulbs are brighter than the old bulbs or things like that. So we have not had to do that at this point in time.
And the Visitors Fund is, makes this affordable, right?
Visitors Fund, yes, the, that is generated from the restaurant and lodging tax and must be used for capital improvements. So we can't fix roads or pay for cop cars and things like that with this money. We have to use it for visitor attractions based on North Dakota Century Code. So this falls squarely in that realm.
Okay. No questions more.
Any further questions?
Move to approve providing up to $45,000 from the Visitor Promotion Fund for the Electronic Marquee Sign Replacement at the East End of Main Street, and to approve the 2025 budget amendment for the purchase of the sign.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number four, under New Business, consider wastewater treatment plant master plan update amendment. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, in 2023, the city budgeted $50,000 to complete a wastewater treatment plant master plan update. AE2S substantially completed this project at the, kind of the end of 2023, beginning of 2024. When meeting with previous commissioners, and with staff and with the consultant, we had kind of put the project on pause because we knew that there would be a new mayor, we knew that there might be new commissioners, and we knew, and we had pending legislative measures that we wanted to see how they shook out. So we put that on, put that effort on pause, finalizing the report on pause until we met again with a few folks here to discuss what the next steps might look like. And when discussing it, we had identified a few items that hadn't been quite addressed in the report yet. And we are bringing this amendment to AE2S's contract before you, so that we could, we could answer a few more questions before we put a pin in the project. The proposed amendment is for $18,570, and would increase the contract price from $50,000 to $68,570. This would include exploring a few other options that hadn't been explored yet, as well as updating numbers to reflect an additional year since these numbers were kind of put together. And there is also some marketing work that's included in this to better communicate the project and the funding sources and all of that to commissioners, legislators, the public, and so. It's a, it's good work, and I think it'll be worth every penny. It's our recommendation to approve the amendment, and I can try and answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
The wastewater treatment plant, unfortunately, the, was way out there at one time, and the city's kind of built around, and you got those residential is, is looking at this, too, is, is maybe relocating or going to another area as well. It's probably like looking for another place to build a landfill. It's not the easiest thing in the world to do, you know?
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, this, this amendment would look at that relocation option. We are expecting it to be cost prohibitive, but we haven't, we haven't explored it in depth. So we want to do that, because we know that question's gonna get asked, and we, and we, it's due diligence to find out, find that answer, rather than just kind of assume that it's cost prohibitive.
Yeah. Because you get to the point where that's gonna have to be seriously considered, and it's gonna be a big project. Thank you.
An increase of approximately $20,000 in just a year. I think it would behoove us to move forward.
I agree.
I move to approve the Task Order Amendment as presented and authorize the use of an additional $18,570 out of the city utility fund.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number five, consider the Public Works Snow Removal Plan. Shane.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I have here today the City of Mandan Snow Removal Plan. Critical component of ensuring that our city remains safe and accessible during the winter months, even in the face of severe weather conditions. The Public Works Street Department has developed a comprehensive and flexible snow removal strategy that prioritizes snow clearing on major roads, emergency routes, and school and bus routes, with residential streets and alleys addressed as resources allow after primary routes are clear. We utilize a wide range of equipment, including motor graders, front-end loaders, truck plows, and sanders. Our crews are on duty around the clock during snow events, and we are prepared to adjust our operations as needed based on weather conditions. In the event of emergency, the department maintains open communication with emergency services to coordinate snow removal efforts, ensuring timely access for response teams. The plan also includes guidelines for clearing cul-de-sacs, alleys, city-owned sidewalks, as well as addressing issues such as mailbox damage and snow piling. We are committed to keeping residents informed throughout snow events via multiple communication channels, so they are aware of ongoing operations. The Snow Removal Plan is a living document designed to adapt to changing conditions. It will be available to the public through the City of Mandan's website as an informational guide, helping residents understand our operations and the city's efforts to manage winter weather effectively. Now, I got the map up here. I'll go through the snow priorities a little bit, and how we allocate resources during snow events, assuring that we address critical areas first. Arterial, arterial roads will generally be plowed after two inches accumulation, and residential streets after four inches of accumulation. So the emergency escort is number one priority, not on the map, but critical. These are urgent missions, such as medical emergencies or fire and rescue operations, where road, where clear roads are essential for safety. These operations can occur at any time, and we take immediate action to ensure the roads are clear for emergency vehicles. Number two here is Main, they're red on the map, if you guys can see the map. These roads are primary routes of our city, critical for connecting neighborhoods, business district, and essential services. Keeping these roads clear is our top priority to ensure flow of traffic and maintain access. Number three, schools, they're blue on the map. After addressing the major arteries, we focus on school routes, which are highlighted, and blue is essential. These routes are passable, especially on school days, to ensure children can travel safely to and from school. Yellow on the map is the cat route. These routes are used by public transit system. We prioritize keeping them clear, so residents continue to access public transportation and utilize it. Number five is residential areas. Once the major routes are clear, we move to the residential areas. While these streets may not be as high priority as the main roads, they remain an important part of our snow removal efforts. Our goal is to ensure that the neighborhood streets remain passable, allowing residents to move around their communities safely. Alleys are next. Although they may not be the major thoroughfares, alleys are vital for garbage collection, deliveries, and parking. These areas are typically addressed after the primary roads, but we ensure they remain part of the comprehensive plan. Finally, the city-owned parking lots, these might not be as critical as other routes, but it's important they remain accessible. In summary, the snow route priorities are designed to ensure that we allocate resources where they are most needed, with a focus on emergency services, critical transportation routes, and essential services. By following this strategy, we ensure that Mandan remains safe, accessible, and operational during snow events. As part of the ongoing efforts to adapt and improve, we've considered the possibility of implementing. of implementing the snow emergency routes. However, at this time, we do not believe the city faces a large enough issue to warrant this protocol. It is my first, I just started month four here, so the reason why we're leaving the plan as the living document, this might have to change right after this, you know, object to change with the snow emergency routes. But at this time, we do not see it as a big issue. Sorry, not a big issue, but just something that we don't see critical at this time. One of the, one of the thing, sorry. Our hope is that by sharing this plan with the community, they will better understand the reasoning behind our snow clearing operation. Clearing streets may seem straightforward, but there's a structured approach behind it. And by keeping the community informed, we ensure transparency, cooperation, and managing winter weather while keeping Mandan safe. Do you guys have any questions?
Mayor Shane, in the past, when you had heavy snowfall, the city's service department would contract or utilize the services of a construction company with their trucks to help remove snow. You're new to the job. Is, you saying you changed the net, those agreements or securing the services of contractors?
No, Mayor, Commissioner Roar, no, we will still utilize contractors if needed in certain snow events, and we'll keep the contracts.
You give bids for that, how do you determine the price in utilizing the services?
Mayor Commissioners, I would have to get back to you exactly on how we bid that out appropriately.
I just don't remember how that was done. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? So this is a plan, not a policy.
Correct.
And you don't see the need for emergency snow removal routes at this time?
That is correct. From my three months, I haven't been through a snow event personally yet, just talking with my superintendent, Dirk. That's how, at Public Works, that's how we feel right now.
But we do have a policy about cars on streets during snow removal. So Chief Ziegler, could you speak to that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If there's a snow event coming in and the commission declares it a emergency, the police department can tow vehicles. If there is a snow event and it's not declared emergency, and it's hindering the tow trucks, not tow trucks, but the plows, we can go out and tow vehicles to allow the plows to plow main arterial roads.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a little history, we've been around a long time. You know, this has been discussed many times over the years, and the snow route thing has been discussed. And of course, one of the issues is you have to place a lot of signs, you got to determine where you're going to place them, they got to be put in. So there's a cost there involved. And what we can see up here so far, according to my experience, is that the way the city's service does their work, it works out pretty good, you know, that we're not being forced or that we have to have snow routes at this point in time. That's not going to contribute a whole lot to the overall efficiency. Would that be your take, too?
Mayor, Commissioner Roar, my take, three months in, that's how I feel as well.
And of course, you might hear about snow gates, too. I got my opinion on those, but until I come forward, I'll keep that to myself.
Any further questions? Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Item number six, consider a change order for the 2024 street reconstruction project. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, our 2024 street reconstruction project is split between two areas. We refer to them as Areas One and Areas Two. Area one is the Shady Acres kind of residential, commercial area, just east of Mandan Avenue and north of Main Street. On this portion of the project, we experienced some evolving situations during the project. We identified some drainage issues at the west ends of Third Street, Second Street, and First Street that we hadn't, that we hadn't, didn't have a, that our solution, we didn't have a solution for at the time. Right now, at the end of First Street, you can see that there is a concrete valley gutter that currently collects water and brings it into the south side of Teamsters Park and outlets, I think, over here into the ditch right next to the train tracks. That is not very operational. It's not working in the way that we want it to. So this change order would be to include the installation of storm sewer, storm sewer infrastructure, inlets, and pipes that would take, collect water at the ends of each of these avenues and convey them to an inlet just south of 16th Avenue Northeast right here. And then that would enter our larger storm system. The total amount for the change order is $187,460. That is close to the amount of contingency that more engineering had included for this area when we sent out assessment letters. Over the course of the project, we've identified a lot of cost-saving measures, and we also had favorable bids. So we feel very comfortable including this improvement on the project. If you have any questions, I can try and answer them. And Grant from more engineering is also here.
Any questions?
I'll move to approve change order two for the 2024 street reconstruction project as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number seven under new business, consider the legislative agenda. Mr. Newbauer.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, as the 2023 legislative session begins in a few weeks here, we normally will bring to you a list of topics and items that we may confront during the session, that we really don't need to come to for your permission to testify for or against a bill if something comes up in one of these areas. And we then have the ability to go and testify in favor of those items. That said, we have a list that I put together for you that is kind of a combination of our previous years, along with the North Dakota League of Cities legislative priorities. The first one deals with infrastructure funding, and I won't go through in deep depth each one of these. But again, it's to support programs that help out, such as the Prairie Dog Bill, Municipal Infrastructure Fund, things like that, special assessments. We would normally oppose any changes to the process of special assessments. Planning and zoning, many times, there will be an effort to limit the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. We usually oppose those because we think it's wise to be able to plan out beyond our current initial borders. We support policy that allows our elected officials to deal with the needs of their city residents regarding property tax. Economic development, we are supportive of programs that are responsible growth and opportunities for our communities. And we talk about preemption. Sometimes those are legislative bills that come up that limit what cities and municipalities can do. We, partisan elections, there's normally a bill that will come up that would indicate that as you've elected municipal officials, you must declare a party. We oppose those and have testified in opposition of those bills before, using the, it doesn't matter if you have a D, R, or an I behind or in front of your name, we still pick up your garbage and fight fires and do police work, and the water comes on when you turn your faucet on, and it goes away when you flush your toilet. It doesn't matter what party you belong to, we still have to accommodate those functions. We are supportive of childcare programs because we know that helps our workforce development. We're supporting affordable housing. We oppose sales tax exemptions because that cuts into our sales tax base. Items in the past that have been items such as, we're not going to charge sales packs on diapers, which may have a minimal tax effect, but it's still the principle of those things. It limits our ability to tax items. Our Home Rule Authority, we do testify in opposition to recommendations and suggestions that our Home Rule Authority be limited. Those are some of the biggies, and they're fairly general in nature. If there are items that you find in your conversations that we should be aware of, we encourage you to let us know. When we testify in front of bills, we will obviously contact our portfolio commissioners and the mayor and let you know what we are thinking and get your permission to do so unless they're in these items and these areas that we feel that we're comfortable in taking positions on. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Okay.
In essence, we would need a motion to approve that, so.
I'll move to approve the 2025 legislative agenda. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. On to resolutions and ordinances. We already took care of item number one. We'll move on to item number two. Consider the resolution for $5,462,000 Water Revenue Bond Series 2025. Greg?
Mayor Commissioners, on June 4th of this year, the city commission approved a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of North Dakota for a loan under the North Dakota Public Finance Authority's Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program for the Collins Avenue Water Reservoir Replacement Project. On September 30th, the North Dakota Industrial Commission approved a $5,462,000 loan requested by the City of Mandan. The total project cost is estimated to be about $7.5 million. Other funding sources in addition to the loan would be $2 million of funding from the state water commission. The interest rate on the 20-year loan from the state would be 1.5%, plus the state also charges a half-a-percent administration fee. The loan would be repaid by approved utility rates, and the city is only obligated for the loan draw requests. And the finance department would recommend approval of this resolution because this would then complete the financing paperwork for the loan. And with that, I will stand for any questions you may have.
No questions? Entertained a motion?
I move to approve the resolution of $5,462,000 for the Water Revenue Bond Series 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number three, consider a resolution establishing rates and charges for services for the engineering department right-of-way permits. Riley?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. So this goes along with consent item H4. Just, this is the resolution to approve the new fees that we had proposed of $25 for repair without removal of concrete, and the changing from $25 for additional openings of utility permits to $65 to account for some compaction testing. We're going to plan on doing this here.
Any questions for Riley?
Move to approve a resolution establishing rates and charges for services for the engineering department right-of-way permits.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Heinz, Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. With that, we'll move on to item L, other business. Is there any other business before the commission?
May I say something, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners? As a new guy in town, new gun in town, if you will, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the experienced commissioners sitting up here before you. I would like to extend my most humble and modest appreciation to all the department heads, city administration, city attorney, for taking the time to mentor this new guy. You have no idea how important your input has been to me, and I thank you very much, and I wish you a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Jerick?
Yeah, in the spirit of being appreciative, I wanted to show some appreciation to a few folks at the city here. Carrie Schmidt and Carla Schultz have been working on a holiday light tour map for our community, and I think it's pretty cool. I brought it up here, it's on our website. This is just an opportunity to recognize some of the citizens around town who have decorated their homes and want to share it with people, or maybe you've driven around and noticed a home that was particularly impressive, and you wanted to draw more attention to it. I think this would be a good opportunity to do so. We put together this map to kind of show where there are some holiday decorations going on in residential neighborhoods. And the more participation we get in it, the more useful the map gets. And I think it's a really cool thing, and I just wanted to make people aware of it.
Thank you, Jerick.
Yes.
I think it's great. And we could talk about wastewater treatment plants and everything else, Memorial Highway, but at times, we have to have some fun and celebrate each other. So that's a great way to do it. And also the lights in the park, the holiday lights, whatever else we could think of. So with no other business, we're going to close this year out with a list of our meetings in 2025, January 7th at 5:30, January 21st at 5:00, and February 4th at 2025 at 5:30. And with that, on behalf of myself and my family, I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I thank the entire staff, the City of Mandan, for an excellent year, and I thank my fellow commissioners for their cooperation. And at this time, we're going to gather in front of the dais, and we're going to sing, no, we're going to, we're going to wish you all a Merry Christmas. So if we want to stand behind and everybody up front?
What's that?
You can stand up.
Okay. Commissioners, come in with me, Amy.
I'm taking a picture.
At least have a red coat.
Yeah.
No, we're not singing.
Me, no.
Yes.
Damn, huh?
What's that?
We had a negative on the board.
Oh.
Do you have your lights on?
Yep.
I don't. I hope not.
Christmas, Mandan, Merry Christmas, Mandan, and a Happy New Year. One, two, three.
Merry Christmas, Mandan, and a Happy New Year.